CBS, this is our final, unless I have some, I have a few things to the end, but I'll leave them to the end so that we don't hold people up. We are gonna see the proposal, revised proposal, really, I think some of us are maybe seeing it for the first time.
I'm sure you will be, I'm sure you will be. My name is Al Del Bello, I represent the applicant in this case. The applicant is CB Northeast 2 LLC, represented this evening by A.J. Barbado, who is here, and Martin Werber is representing the landowner, who is here also. We will be presenting a total site plan and architectural view for you with the signage that's gonna go on the site. The site, as you know, is the old Armont Shopping Center. It is currently occupied by a restaurant, a pizzeria, and a dry cleaner. The old A&amp;P store is currently vacant. CBS is proposing to use that vacant store for its own uses. We have with us this evening Paul Vitaleano from VHP, who will be representing, presenting the site plan to you, he's our engineer, Kevin Patton from BKA Architects, who will give you the architectural drawings, and Gary McCoy from Poiant Signs, who will be presenting the signage. We've already received a report-
Would you, just so we can hear you at home, would you just adjust that mic and maybe move up a little closer to it?
We just today received a report from Frederick P. Clark on the traffic and parking, which I think is satisfactory, as they reported. We have filed our traffic and parking report with them, and I'm happy that they were able to review it. I would like to just state a couple misconceptions that's been out in the public lately. This is not a big box store. A big box store is 50,000 square feet or more. This store, the A&amp;P was actually 19,886 square feet. The CBS store is smaller. They're reducing the size of it to 17,389 square feet. The rental, they will be breaking off a rental area so that some local merchant or somebody can rent some space, will be 24,000, 2,497 square feet. The other misconception that's out there is that people have been talking about all the extensive trucking that's going to take place. This CBS store will be serviced on a daily basis by maybe one or two small vans or box trucks, who will supply the incidental kind of things that go into the store, the newspapers and drinks and so forth. It'll be serviced once a week by a large vehicle, a trailer, that is CBS's own trailer, which CBS can schedule. They can pick the time of the day, the day of the week, when they're going to bring that trailer in to provide the basis, the basics that the CBS store uses. So the misinformation that's been out there has been terribly misrepresenting what the CBS truly is. Now, what I'd like to do is just ask Paul Vitaleano to take us through the site plan, then go through the architecture and the signage, and we're open for questions. Yes, sir?
Did you say the CBS trailer is one time per week or one by day?
One time per week.
And what's the size of that trailer? WB-50, WB-40?
WB-53, probably.
What is it?
WB-50.
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 And by the way, the site plan currently shows two loading docks, only because the code requires that. We're gonna ask your permission to waive one of these loading docks, which will actually answer the question that F.B. Clark had raised with regard to the parking in this area. So that'll be part of our application also. But Paul, if you present the site plan? Oh, I'm sorry. We have handouts that I think might be helpful to you, they're takeaways, you can follow our presentation, and you can take them with you.
What's the selling, what's your selling area?
What's the market area?
No, the square footage of actual selling area in that store versus back office.
Kevin, do you?
Yeah, 13,500.
13,300 square feet is the selling area. We'll go through that in our presentation. Need to assemble two more handouts.
I'm sorry, do we have one more for the cultivation part?
Um, yes. We'll put one together for you.
Thank you, Al. Mr. Chairman and Commission members, as Al mentioned, my name is Paul Vitaleano, I'm a civil engineer with Vanas Hagen in Brussels, and we're located in Middletown, Connecticut. I'd like to just quickly walk you through the site plan. I'm sure everyone's very familiar with the site, but, so I'll be, I'll be brief, but as Al mentioned, this area, this area here is the former A&amp;P building, that's designated as the CVS. The A&amp;P actually continues up into this portion here, which we're gonna designate as a separate retail space. Kevin from BKA Architects will be able to explain that further. There are two restaurants and a dry cleaner, also occupy the plaza. As everyone knows, there is a main entrance here, off of Main Street. This drive-al comes down the slope, enters the parking field, there's also an access from Maple Avenue. Here, it's off the page, this continues down to Maple Ave, and allows access, it's full access into the site. As I've mentioned, we're not looking to add any square footage or take any away. We are, as I mentioned before, and as Kevin will elaborate, swinging us up into the CVS and a separate retail space. The additions to the building, the improvements, as opposed to additions, Kevin will go into later. The one addition we are making is a drive-through window in the back. This will service the pharmacy only, and it's located in this location here. It's a single lane drive-through. To access that, if you're coming from Main Street, you will come down the main drive and continue along the front of CVS, continue around through the drive-through, and circle around the entire building, and leave. You could also access it from Maple Ave, come up this way, take a right, and once again continue all the way around the building. Another site feature I just wanna point attention to is that there is a wetland system back here, associated with the Wampus River. The 100-foot adjacent area does encroach into this minor piece of the property right here. We're not proposing any work in that area, so we do not have any encroachment or any work in that, in that area that would affect that wetland or that upwind review area. So now, if I could just quickly go through the improvements. What we're looking to do is repave the entire parking lot. So as you can see, all this gray areas, the existing pavement, we're going to basically what's called milling overlay, we're gonna scrape up the old pavement, rehabilitate it. As you know, from driving out there now, there's a lot of potholes, there's a lot of depressions, things like that. So the entire parking lot will be brand-new. By doing that, we're gonna have basically a new canvas to start from, as far as restriping the parking spaces. What we saw when we went out there now is that the existing parking spaces don't quite meet code, they're different sizes, different lengths and widths, and the drive-al's don't quite match. So what we're gonna do is restripe it to basically conform to code. That would necessitate a few more spaces in the back that we could designate for employee parking, but we feel that that, one, it brings it up to code, and two, it just makes it a little safer and more consistent for the drivers. By doing that, we would still maintain the same number of parking spaces that are out there today. There's 160, as I mentioned, not quite to code, but there's 160 spaces out there today. 160 are required, and we're proposing the same 160. The other improvement, by doing that to the parking area, by restriping it, we have an opportunity to improve the handicap accessible parking. There's currently some spaces right here, which, once again, don't meet code as far as grading goes and size. So we're gonna take that opportunity to restripe and regrade this to actually meet ADA requirements, and also have a crosswalk going to the building with a ramp right here and another ramp here, leading to this sidewalk. So this will bring the ADA portion of the parking lot up to code. We're also gonna take that opportunity to redo the handicap parking adjacent to the pizza restaurant, and bring those up to code as well, both with grading and striping. Some of the other improvements, we're gonna rehabilitate or reconstruct this entire sidewalk along this slope that leads up to Main Street, so right now, it's, it's not very good condition. I believe it's an asphalt sidewalk, we're gonna make that a new concrete sidewalk, so this would be brand-new, going to Main Street. Also, there's some guard rail that's in disrepair. As you come down that slope, we're gonna replace it with new wooden guard rail on both sides, it's represented by these black lines here. We're also, right now, the current building is not sprinkled. We'd like, we're still working with the water department, but we're looking to add a six-inch line coming into the sprinkler room, which is this little bump-in, if you will, which is its own separate room, to bring the six-inch water lines that the CBS building could have a sprinkler system. Obviously, that's a much safer thing for the fire department, and also good for the tenants. So we are looking to do that, see that as an improvement. The lighting as well, as you go out to the site now, you see different types of light poles, different colors, different sizes, different fixtures that are pointing in various directions. We'd like to take all those down and come in with new lighting. That's actually in your packet, the second, second page of that packet, is just some of the cut sheets from the manufacturer showing what the, what the lights look like. We're gonna go with the lighter gray color as opposed to the black that you see there, but those, that fixture on that first sheet basically is mounted on a 20-foot, 25-foot high pole, and they're represented by these symbols here that you can see throughout. There's nine of them, so, which is, for a site this big, and for the height that we chose, we chose 25 feet. Usually CBS has taller lights, but we wanted to kinda keep something a little lower, so you can see those throughout the site. There's also a few wall packs on the building, whereas right now, there's no lighting on the building. We're proposing five wall packs, most of them are in the rear. I believe four of the five are actually right here in the loading area. So that's just something for safety and for the operational feature of the store that we're, we're looking to add to the building. Also, while we're talking about the rear of the building, Kevin will get into some more detail as well, but we're introducing compactor enclosures and dumpster enclosures. So right now, you can see there's probably dumpsters not right up against the building, they're not really enclosed properly. Now that we have the drive-through here, and we're gonna have customers going back, that we wanna clean that up, make it a little safer, and be close to the building, so we're gonna have enclosures that are represented, really, they're gonna be right tight to the building, they're represented by this lighter yellow area, and it's gonna be, in an enclosure will be safer and, and cleaner. As part of having the drive-through, we are, we are gonna have to raise the grade up a little bit, so there'd be a very short retaining wall here in the back, it's only about three to four feet high. So we're gonna have this line in the back. We're also gonna have a wood stockade fence to screen the back of the building from, from the park area. So if you're looking from the park area into the site, you would just see that, that stockade fence, and you wouldn't see that operational or the, or the drive-through for that matter. As far as, as far as landscaping, this board doesn't quite show it, but the packet you have in front of you shows some, some of the existing trees, actually all of the existing trees. The site is very densely vegetated right now, there's a lot of very mature growth, we're looking to maintain all of that. So along the frontage here, there's a few trees here, along the perimeter here and in the back, as you can see by the, the black trees that are shown on your packet. There's a lot of vegetation there, and we'd like to maintain that. We're proposing a few more trees throughout the site, just within the islands that we have to work with, so we're gonna try to basically improve that with new, new sod along the inside, and some of those trees and shrubs along the center islands that were, really that we have here, and along, along our frontage as you enter the site. One of the things that we did include in our submission was an alternative plan to that. We know that the parking count, as I stated, we required 160, and we're proposing 160. We do have an alternative plan, which reduces that number by four, and we're, we're leaving that to the, the board's discretion to select either this plan or that plan, if this may be. And we are, we would propose, eliminating these two spaces here, which would allow for, for these trees to be spaced out differently and grow into the existing trees that are there now, and also to remove two tree, two parking spaces here and place them with landscape islands. The plan that we submitted actually showed trees in those islands. I'm not sure if that's actually allowed, we'll have to talk about that, 'cause those spaces are meant to be land banked, and if those areas ever became parking spaces, then the trees obviously are an obstacle to that. So we'd have to discuss that, but our alternative plan would remove the two end cap spaces here, and the two here in this corner. And overall, whether it's that plan, the alternative, or the original, we're pretty much reducing the amount of pavement, not by much, really, we're matching it, we're reducing it by maybe a couple hundred square feet, with the alternative by about 850 square feet. So for the most part, we're, we're keeping the, the limits that you see out there today, we're just gonna improve the curving and the paving and the landscaping that's out there today. Really, with that, I can hand it over to Dr. Al.
Actually, the land banking might be desirous, so that we could put a few more plantings in to break up the parking. I might say that when we've studied the parking on this, in this shopping center, even with the A&amp;P, on the busiest shopping days of the year, the parking was, parking lot was never full. So there is room to, to eliminate four spaces, if you'd like to. And I might also say that CBS did not originally contemplate a drive-through window, but in talking it over with others, it was decided that it's a convenience for people. It's a convenience so that a mother with a sick child doesn't have to get out of a car and drag the child into the store, could actually go to the drive-in window, get their prescriptions filled. So CBS is really responding to what appears to be a convenience for shoppers by putting that window in. And of course, as I said before, we'd wanna eliminate this loading area with your permission, a wave on that loading area to keep this parking in place. And I now like Kevin Patton to present the architecture. You can tell from what we're talking about that this is a joint venture of the landlord and CBS. They're working very closely together to really rebuild and dress up this entire shopping center.
Let me ask two questions on, on this part of the presentation. What do you intend in doing with that little corner, the, it looks like the southeastern corner where there's now a loading dock? What will happen to that loading dock? That's question number one. Question number two is, is John Keller here? I, I don't think you can sprinkle a building with a six-inch line. I think you need an eight-inch line, and so, so that's an important-
That's fine, that, that's a good point. We're still working, we're still working with the water department to figure out what that would be, if the demand's even, if it's even available off Main Street. Whatever that line needs to be, we'll do that, that's fine, we're still having those conversations.
I'm pretty sure you need eight inches, so.
What was your loading question? What was that question?
What's gonna happen to the loading dock that's there now? It's still shown on the plan, but is, is it not intended to be active, or is?
It's, I'll let Kevin speak to that a little more. It's not really intended to be active, but, as a loading dock, but it is gonna be there and reconfigure, there will be a door there. I'll let Kevin explain that further.
It won't be used for loading. Let's go through the architecture with Kevin Patton.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Patton, I'm a senior associate at BKA Architects, located in Brockton, Massachusetts. I'm gonna orientate my plan so that it, well, I'll move it this way. Okay. So CBS is going in where the current A&amp;P is today, it's about 19,500 square feet. CBS is interested in occupying this chunk of the building with about 2,500 square feet left over at the lower portion here. This is the main parking field, this is the rear of the plaza, and the other smaller tenants are located down here towards the bottom of the plan. CBS is planning on reusing the same entrance area as A&amp;P is with a new door. We are planning on replacing the existing storefront, it's deteriorated, it looks like it's been painted aluminum. Our proposal is to replace it with an anodized dark bronze aluminum, so that the look stays the same, but the storefront will have a much longer life than what it's out there today. The sub-tenant area located here would also get its own storefront, it's located in the existing brick wall area, a new sprinkler room located here. The pharmacy for the CBS is located in the middle of the back, with the drive-through window directly attached to it. It's for sale of pharmaceutical prescriptions and things of that nature only, not for general merchandise out of the store. Proposing a couple restrooms located in this area. This is another dock that's along the side, and it's not intended to be reused as a dock, but we do need a second means of egress off of the retail floor. So we're proposing on putting a railing around that, removing the roof that's on it today, so it's not so obtrusive to the building, and then providing a new set of stairs off of the back of it. The tenant on this side will be provided a new set of stairs out the back for egress, and then of course has its front for egress. At the rear of the CBS, this is the current dock area, and we're proposing two dumpsters back here, one for general refuse, excuse me, and one for sorted recyclables. And then we also have a cardboard compactor. Most of CBS's product on their tractor trailer comes boxed, and they recycle all of it, and it gets put in here for pickup later on. CBS has ground floor stockroom space proposed in this area, it's a couple thousand square feet. Retail floor is about 13,500 square feet, including the pharmacy sales area. Proposing a few changes to the exterior. This is a rendered view. Other proposed changes, the, the panel system that's out there today, we're planning on removing, and essentially replacing in the same area with a clavering. We're also proposing a new decorative cornice that would be applied to the existing canopy, which today the face is just a flat metal. So our proposed view, full length, including the areas across the tenants, we're also planning on, or proposing to clad the existing parapet in this area with a clavering to match the CBS, removing the bump-up that was in this area, the restaurants, facade, and stucco, and window pattern being, remaining as it is today, as well as the two tenants for their storefront. The new tenant area that's attached to CBS, located in the brick wall, will have a matching storefront to the new CBS storefront. And then, there's a pan, panel area in this area that would get covered up with the clavering. Down over here is the, the former loading dock with the egress stairs, so we've removed the roof off of this side. And the landlord has asked us to unify the signage. I don't know if we have a full signage package that includes those, but the thought is, is that we would match the color and approximate at least the font, so that it all worked together. And what I have here on this board is a closer view with the CBS entrance here, the new storefront pattern, the new cornice line, and we're also proposing to replace all the soffit out there, I've seen better days, and lighting in the same place that it exists today. Up here, we have a few photographs of what's out there, and this is the panel that's everybody's familiar with. We have existing brackets that we'd like to change the style of, and I've proposed a slightly fancier bracket in, in the same locations that they are today. There are cut sheets of all these things in that packet. The bracket, the cardboard compactor, CBS will also put a, a separated recycling container for cans and bottles, as well as the plastic bags in the vestibule, to help in sorting all that material as best we can. And this is that parapet that extends with that panel system out over what will be today, or what is proposed today, the, the tenant space that we'd like to remove, and so that there's a continuous cornice line across here. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. I have a question for you.
Yes.
What about things like cart corrals? Where, where you gonna have those?
Sure. Right now, most people don't bring their carts out to the parking lot, like a food store for CBS. But CBS does have one located inside their vestibule here, so it is, typically, the store personnel will police the lot to pick up the carts, but there's none out in the parking field that we're proposing.
There are two existing cart corrals now that we're going to remove.
And there are the small shopping carts, about half the size of a food store shopping cart.
Sign it. Gary McCoy from Poiant Signs will take you through the signage, and then we'll respond
Good evening, my name's Gary McCoy, I'm with Poiant Sign Company, we're gonna talk about the proposed sign package for the store. Nothing really extravagant, we're looking to do the two individual letter signs on the front facade and on the side facade, just with the CBS pharmacy logo. These will be individual letters in red, as Kevin had mentioned earlier. We're also proposing two monument signs at each curb cut, which is off of Maple, a monument here, which includes the, the four tenant panels, and there'll be a second one out here on Main Street. We're gonna remove the existing, there's an existing sign there now, that's probably 20, 25 feet high, that'll be removed, and these will be put in its place. These signs are all internally lit. That's about it.
Where's, I, I didn't see on the plan a, a sign at the Maple-
On the, on your handout with the signage on the second page, you'll see a site plan.
Which one?
The one that just has the signage on it.
One sign. Oh, there it is. How do I see it?
It's identified as C1.
Uh-huh. You'll notice the monument signs are built on a stone base. So what's, there's a designation there of C1 and C2.
C2 is the entrance/exit signage, which actually, these, they don't, CBS doesn't use these anymore, they just recently have been obsolete, out of the sign program. They used to have entrance/exits at each curb cut, so I apologize, those, those will not be as part of the package.
Okay.
The only signs that you'll see at the curb cut will be these, these small monuments identifying as CBS and the four tenants.
All right, well, are you, your part of it is-
I'm short and sweet.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any questions? Yes, what was that? I just thought, I'm prepared.
Don't get excited.
I have, I have a number of questions that you might, that you might- Just so that you, you're keeping track of it, you under, you're gonna investigate the sprinkler, where are you with that? First of all, congratulations on, on, on that effort, because I think we would like to have more and more things in this town sprinkling. Are you considering sprinkling just your space, or are you gonna extend that to the existing tenants?
We have all the flow information, and a full sprinkler design has been done, and submitted, and reviewed and approved by the fire department when we were just doing the fit-up drawings. And a stub or a zone will be left to be extended to the other tenants. As they change or renovate, they will have the opportunity to sprinkle their space off of the main line coming into the building that we're proposing.
Okay, so to be clear, you're, you're going to include the capacity-
Yes.
-but you're not gonna install that system until you have a tenant change?
Correct.
The, the facade, have, before I go there, what do you, what do you have left to do to resolve the sprinkler issue? The facade, before I go there, what do you have left to do to resolve the sprinkler issue? I think that's going to be an important consideration here.
It's my understanding, all of the design has been done and we've had the hydrants flowed, so we know what the capacity is in the street. And unfortunately, I don't have the construction drawings with me today, but I'm fairly certain that the six inch line that was being proposed is adequate for an ordinary hazard use group two, which is what we're proposing as a use in this building.
My question is, you said it's subject to somebody's further review.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the moment, we're waiting for the water department basically to give us the okay and say that they've reviewed this in our, in concurrence with the information we provided. So we're basically waiting for that to come back.
We haven't had any conversation with Sal about this.
Sal's the person we've been dealing with and we haven't heard back.
Well, he's the man. Okay. Have, I presume, have you had any informal discussions with ARB on facade and signage?
I don't believe yet.
Nope. Not yet. We will go.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to recommend at some point before we close this up that we participate, that we have a member or two in the planning board participate with you and the ARB because I think that signage and facade will be again another important area.
Happy to do it. Happy to do it.
I'd like to add something to that. Recently, a CVS opened in Bedford Hills that has some stonework that I think made it more attractive than it would otherwise be. Right now, you're kind of planning to use the same kind of brick face that we've seen for so long and it's not all that attractive. So I think you should consider perhaps offering an alternative that's more stonework than actual brick.
The brick is what's there today.
Yeah, the brick is there.
I know it's there today. Yeah. It can change that facade.
We'll take it under consideration.
Please do.
All right, that's how you're being, I've had a number of people ask me about hours of operation for this store.
Good. A.J. Barbado.
My name's A.J. Barbado for the record.
You have to come to a microphone. Took the hard way.
My name's A.J. Barbado from Gershman Brown Crowley. Right now, the hour, excuse me, right now, the hours are planned to be seven to midnight of the store. It's not planned as a 24-hour store.
Say that last part again.
It's not planned to be a 24-hour store.
And is that seven days a week?
Yes.
Same hours every day?
Yes.
Seven days a week?
Yeah, and then they sometimes vary it based on customer demand. So there's a lot of stores in the area that are maybe seven to 10 or even nine to nine and kind of depends on what the customer need is.
It would, it would probably be helpful to us if you would give us a survey of the surrounding stores that are in our general market area and tell us what their hours are.
Sure. We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. I know there was a concern initially, Adam, you've looked at this, at the height of the light poles. I believe they brought them down to, from, from an early version to 25. Is, is in your view, that something we, is workable?
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah. They started out quite a bit higher, which would have been a problem. And have we gotten to the detail of the type of lining?
I've asked.
We have the cuts and your, and the handouts.
We do?
Yeah. You have the fixtures and the handouts.
Okay. And has there been a study done in terms of the light spillage from this light to any residential area?
They submitted, they submitted that and I have some comments on that.
Okay.
For those restors.
Okay. Going through my list here. I have a concern, I don't, I don't have a concern with your request to eliminate this loading area because I think that, you know, the loading, the loading for the former A&amp;P, an A&amp;P took 120 trucks a week. And if I get your, your count, it's going to be substantially less, so I think you could certainly lose a loading dock.
Basically, this loading dock will be used once a week.
Yeah. And to the extent that you can control it, WB50, really, I think most of your loading's going to be off the fire lane. I mean, that's just how it works. That's what they do anyway.
Yeah, the small trucks.
They don't go to stocks anyway. But I do have a concern about the elevations. As I went through your grades, in order to make this, in order to make this drive-through work, you're, you're having to, here it is, you're having to pick this grade up almost two feet, well, two feet, from 384 to 386 and then back to 384 again. So, and I don't see, I'd like to see a section, an east-west section, that let us know what that did to the, to the property line. How are you, you're going to need, I would assume, a wall, a retaining wall or something.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a retaining wall.
Ball, go through that again. Let me get out of here. I'm correct. We'd be picking up the grade here a couple of feet, basically creating a plateau for a car to come up to the drive-through and then come down away from it. You would see, if you look on closely to the, either that plan, that C3 plan that we submitted or the color graphic, there's a wall basically from here to here, limits from here to here. And it's really about two to three feet and for a short period peaks at four feet. And we're really, we're doing that so we don't grade this out because we want to maintain some, there's some trees back here that we want to protect. So when you're talking about a three to four foot high wall, it's really, we're talking about this high at its peak.
But are those, I guess my concern is, I can see that that's, that's a ramp that would work fine, except that it's going to have some impact, I would think, on those parallel parking spaces along the west end property boundary.
Actually, the grade back there to ramp up there is not very steep at all. It's probably only about 5%, which is really, when you're standing out there, you don't even really notice that. You've got 5% on a, on a parallel space, you wouldn't even notice that.
Okay, well.
It's not a very steep ramp. If you're imagining a steep ramp coming up?
No, I see.
It's really not.
I see it. I just, I just know that you're now going to, I presume, have parallel parking spaces that are going to, of necessity, except the same grade.
Yes.
So.
Right.
We want to be sure that that works and you're not having a parallel parking space where you're in effect backing uphill to.
No, absolutely not, absolutely not. And those, those spaces here really could be designated for employees since they're now, obviously, we don't really want customers parking back there. So the store manager can definitely tell his employees to use those spaces, but these are, these are not outside the realm of normal engineering practice as far as grade.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Would you provide us with the calculations behind your parking calculations, how you got to 160?
Yes, it's actually on sheet C2. It's on the chart on the left-hand corner. It's also on the.
On C2 here?
Correct. It's also on the color graphic as well.
Okay.
Basically, this is the color graphic, so it's right here. The, I could go through it quickly if you'd like. It was one space per 200 square feet for retail and the dry cleaner as well. The restaurants were one space per 75 square feet, which is the requirement from the code. So basically, the two restaurants together, just to put in perspective, require 54 spaces. And the remaining retail would make up the rest, the 106.
That answers the question as to why it was seemingly overparked.
It's the restaurants.
Because it never, it was, it's the restaurants.
It's the restaurants that.
Right. Those were never included in the, in the existing, it was, it was done at, it's actually done at four per thousand.
Right, which four per thousand would, would obviously, the restaurant's four times that requirement, so.
To be clear, it looks as though you're not intending to make any improvements on the Maple Avenue access driveway?
That's correct. We weren't, we weren't planning on disturbing that at all.
Okay.
There's a problem with that one pole that's there on the corner on that entrance. There's a utility pole.
Yeah, there is a utility pole.
It's right on the driveway side. It's pretty.
But I think we have some good news on that, don't we?
Yeah, I met in the field with Con Ed maybe two or three weeks ago and informed them that that's really a traffic hazard in that location, in that existing driveway. He said he put the paperwork in and being in contact with the town, but the expectation is that Con Ed's going to move that pole.
Any other questions from anybody else up here?
I just have a quick comment on the aesthetics of the building. This may be more of an ARB in their purview. You've done quite a bit of work streamlining and cleaning up the whole facade, but in keeping with the proposed Armagh Square motif of a New England scape, did you give any consideration to perhaps changing some roof lines around and perhaps giving it more of a New England look, considering you are doing extensive work? So how much would it entail to exaggerate that a little bit into more of a shopping center that would fit in the area?
We, we tend, we weren't coming out looking to add a, any additional roof lines to the existing sloped roof that's over the A&amp;P. I've dealt with a lot of A&amp;Ps over the past 15 years and I will tell you that, you know, without having exhaustive exploration of what exists up in this roof, it would be, from our standpoint, a mistake to try and add a gable or something like that to it. Quite often, they are understructured. Quite often, the joists are two feet on center. Quite often, I can't add snow loads or drift conditions to either a roof here, a roof here, or over here. In fact, we went back and forth quite a bit with the owner on what we can do along this side. And especially when I have operating tenants down there, I need to stay away from adding additional roof loading. So our thought was to work on this edge for the canopy and clean up this facade so it made some more sense and reduce some of the materials and textures from the building so that we could simplify and enhance some of its features.
So in other words, even if we're adding a safe, false facade, even if you wrap the corner a little bit, five-foot section, so to speak, and just almost, again, a visual with all the bearing on the front wall of the structure where the brick is laying against, you don't think that would be adequate to support even a false few little gables and so on and so forth?
From which side?
The whole face.
From, going down this way? It's out of the question. I'm sorry. I can't work overhead of the tenants and there's no way that roof will support a drift load of anything more than what exists down there today. It's possible if, working with this board and ARB, if something needs to happen to this roof where I don't have a tenant and I need to reinforce it to take an architectural feature, we'd be happy to explore those.
Like the Asian restaurant has a little type of gable roof.
It does.
What I'm saying is just pick up on that, perhaps slightly larger, slightly smaller, maybe with some different textures, different architectural shingles, perhaps stone facades, stone veneers and so on and so forth, perhaps to break it up a little bit. I'm not sure that that could not be done. Is that a truss system in the CVS?
We believe it's a field-created truss system, not an off-site prefabricated.
With the bearing on the facade that's where the sign is?
Yeah, there's a continuous lintel beam that occurs in this area. There are outriggers that come where steel comes out this way, comes into the store and then gets tied back up so that it, it's counterbalanced cantilever. There's another, there's a load-bearing masonry wall that's up in here that the roof trusses are directly bearing on that. And then inboard of that, there's a steel line about 35 feet inside the store.
You have bearing walls, what I was referring to before.
Right.
So you do have some bearing on the front side of the building?
I do. And anything added to the facade that would create different bearing lines, valleys or a stacking condition would impact the current truss or roof. So it would just have to be evaluated. And the proposal, if anything gets added to it, we just have to keep in mind structure. It's not just a matter of tacking on a gable.
Obviously, you'd have to do your homework.
Right.
As we go to the ARB, we can discuss those in more detail.
That'd be great if you can. I think, I'd like people to share the view that a more of an aesthetically pleasing facade. In other words, I can take a look at this and no, no insult or injury to what your design is, you cleaned it up greatly, but you can take a look at this. This could be in strip mall in Florida or in Armagh, New York. So we're just trying to differentiate, you know, slightly.
Remember, this is a very old building.
I don't have the exact age. I would guess it's somewhere in the, in the 50s.
Yeah, pretty old building. But we'll discuss it with the ARB.
Any effort would be great.
We'll do.
As a summary, the single most missing component here to me is addressing the Maple Way entry. There's no sense in my mind in doing all of this work and I think a lot of it's excellent that you've done, so our job is to be nitpickers, but unfortunately, we aren't quite ready tonight. I've been working with Adam on a proposal to greatly improve this entryway, which requires the cooperation of the adjoining landowner. And we've had many discussions about the curb cut, no curb cut, this cut. We understand your objections to it, but I think we have, we're 80% toward a plan that I think you'll find acceptable because it will, it'll be with the cooperation with the landowner who will actually give part of his property over to helping this driveway be greater. So I think, I would like to put that to bed before we give a blessing on this, this whole plan. As I say, I had hoped we would have, have been ready tonight to discuss that with you, but I think, I think we need a couple of follow-up meetings. This is, you can see by the attendance tonight, this is a project in town that is of interest to many, many people. And this is a chance to get it done exactly right and exactly in coordination with the citizens of town who are, who are very interested. So I don't want to skip it over quickly, but I also understand from the applicant's standpoint, we also don't want to hold you up. You've been working on this for some time now and I know the history of this is you've been through a lot of delays with previous ideas. So don't get the idea that we're, we're going to unnecessarily delay you, but I do want to spend some more time, I think, to really understand and perhaps make some adjustments. And I would, I would leave it to the ARB to, I would want to have their comments in advance, actually, on both the signage and the architecture. And I want to have a chance to present, sit with you and sit, and present this plan for the Maple Avenue entrance because I think that's going to be good for the tenant too. Making that entrance more attractive, safer, wider will, will be to everyone's benefit. The rest of it, I think, is, you know, I love the idea of sprinkling, would like to get that squared away. I don't have a problem with the, with the losing of the loading dock. We'll see how others feel, but I think that's, your arguments are particularly well-taken. You know, I don't know if ULI provides any guidelines for, can you lose a space or two if you have a drive-through? Logic would tell you if someone's driving through a pickup, they're not parking, so you'd be able to lose a space or two here and be able to have the trees.
I know we could. I know we could lose a few spaces.
I, I've actually not done that homework myself. I don't know what guideline exists, but I'm sure there are. You can probably go off that 160. Other than that.
We're available to talk to anytime you want about Maple Avenue. We'll discuss that. Now, there's two matters before you this evening, if I'm not mistaken. One is the referral from the town board on the special permit. The other is our site plan application. I would hope maybe you could bifurcate those and react to the referral from the town board to allow the town board to move ahead with its special permit. Site plan will remain with you, and we'll discuss those items that you're interested in.
How does the Seeker hold it all in us?
We obviously have to deal with Seeker. This board may consider itself wanting to be lead agency.
Well, the special permit's not a secret issue. That's only advice. That's not a determinant. You're not a determining agency.
But the town board can't act until Seeker is determined.
Town board.
Right, but we haven't even had a board declare intent to be lead agency yet.
But they did make a referral.
That's all they did.
Yeah. For your advice.
So you could also declare your intent to be lead agency tonight if you wish to do that, at least get that done.
But might not the town board wish to?
Well, they didn't do it last, at their last meeting, and it had been included as a request in the applicant's letter.
At any point, I can't imagine that the planning board is at a point where they're ready to make a recommendation on this application back to the town board at this point. As you can see, there are a whole host of issues that need to be addressed, some of them directly relating to the special permit, some of them more directly related to the site plan, but I think there's enough here to discuss.
I agree with that. I don't think the town board intends to be lead agency. I think their, their expectation is that this board will declare itself lead agency. And I think that we, we're, you are, you are quite well along your way. You're not just coming in with a half-baked idea, but I do, it's well thought out, and an awful lot of the questions, you have appropriate answers to. But I think that there's enough loose ends that if we would be able to tie those up when we, when we refer it back, it'll be a much stronger referral and won't have all kinds of contingencies attached. I think in the end of the day, it'll save you time.
Fine.
So Adam or Roland, do, do we have to be asked by the town board? To declare ourselves? Oh, we declare.
You declare.
If they wanna take it back, they can.
You declare your intent to be lead agency, and that referral goes out to also the town board? And if they wanna jump you, they will.
Well, I would.
Probably not the right word. I was wondering, I was gonna get mugged.
It's, I mean, speaking for myself, I don't wanna speak for everyone else, it's a lot of work, but I think that's what we're here to do. I think we ought to declare our intent to be lead agency for this project.
I'd make that motion. I say it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. I don't have any questions, but I would like to, I would like to say that as soon as possible, including, we'll try to get it set up this week, I think we ought to sit down with the ARB people, with myself and with Art, if you wanna join us in, and see if we can't, and Adam, see if we can't hammer out some of these loose ends. And by the time we do that, we'll, we'll have our, a little proposal for you on this entryway, which I think you're gonna find will be mutually beneficial.
We're available. Do you want us to contact the ARB or will your board be setting that up?
Well, there's two things. I think, unless stepping on procedure, I think I'd like to meet with a couple of, a member or so informally first before they go formally before the entire board, to get a feeling, you know, you'd like to get a sense of how close you are to closure there. And I think we can do that, and it dovetails in a lot with what we wanna see happen anyway. So, but should they, I guess to save time, they should make an appointment now, shouldn't they?
They could. And, you know, if you want to meet with one or two members of the architectural review board, or if you wanna have a written communication from the planning board to the ARB, we could do that, or we could have a joint meeting.
I would suggest you make an appointment with the ARB in the normal course of, course of time.
We will do that.
If we can get one of them, pull them aside and get some input for how they feel. I don't, they haven't seen any of this, I presume.
Yeah, no, they have not.
So we might as well, I don't think that harms you in any way to.
No, we'll set it up. We'll set a meeting up with them. We will do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Green. My name is Joe Baker. I'm the attorney for concerned citizens of Armon, and I just have one point procedurally to clear up and not criticizing anything you've done tonight. And I think it's appropriate to take more time to make the report back to the town board for the special use permit. Mr. Rick Veroni can correct me if I'm wrong, but under the town code, if the town board doesn't get a report back from you within 30 days, they can proceed with the public hearing anyway on the permit. And I would think it would be wise if we get an agreement from Mr. Del Bello, that his client will waive that 30-day time period so you have the time to, you know, give this a review before you get to a point of making the report back to the town board on the special use permit.
There is a 30-day requirement in the zoning code, but it's never been the case that the town board has decided to schedule a public hearing. But as long as Mr. Del Bello's here, if he would consent to extending that time period a bit, then the record is clear and the town board doesn't have to ponder.
We'll, we'll agree to extend it for another 30 days.
So we're with, we're only, what, 15 days into the 30 days? So you've gained another 45 to start with.
That's fine.
Thank you. If there are no more comments or questions, I have, I have a few housekeeping things. I want Roland to spend a few minutes in executive session. I have a few legal questions on a couple of our applications that I think we will do in executive session.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. We need to schedule some sidewalks. Do you wanna do that now? I think our agenda is complete.